To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Gene.
Do you have the agenda before? Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have none.
Seeing that, I make motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved as second to through the agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Next, we have the minutes attached to the agenda. I did not see anything. I think they're well written. I'll make a motion that approves the minutes as presented.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved as second to through the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, the first thing we have on the agenda is Carl Wilburn.
Sit here, Carl.
Have a nice chair.
I might have to take a nap.
Well, we gotta be careful. I was just taking a nap.
Yeah, well, that's true. You don't want to be imbalanced. Before I actually get going, I did review that survey on the county home this morning. Just so you know where that, how that lays out.
Okay.
Pretty close. This has got the lines on it. Well, it does too, huh?
Sorry.
He emailed me that. Oh, it, uh...
Mike.
Mike, okay. Yeah, that's kind of how it lays out. So, we did send that on to the city then for approval.
So, is this, oh, yeah, we don't need to approve it.
No, it's in the two mile. You guys don't approve.
Good thing Carl was here this morning.
They called me to go out there. And then I called Neil to go out there too. And we tried to stay as close as we could before we didn't inherit any trees and try to keep it square as much as good.
And you gotta understand too, this is straight lines on a round earth, so, you know, it's kind of...
So, is this whole area here gonna be lot one of the northwest, southwest?
Just, just that you can see in the, in the black.
In the black. Okay, so that little chunk here isn't...
That, no, that didn't go all the way to the quarter, quarter line.
Okay.
So, it's just what's...
Yeah, there's a fifteen feet in there or something.
Yeah, evidently, probably...
They go all the way back to the quarter section.
Yeah, it, it probably, they needed a little bit on the south side of that driveway. And just put fifteen more feet on there in the next quarter, quarter.
Yeah, I don't understand that. But he said that was done way back in...
Yeah, that's been that way for a long time.
About the time after Moses was here about ten years.
So anyhow, that's just how it lays out. Just thought you might like to see that.
Okay.
Because you wouldn't get it to approve.
That's right. So, you could send me out here today.
Yeah, that's good. So, did y'all get a copy then of the monthly report?
Yes.
Or quarterly report, I guess it is. Awful busy quarter.
Yeah, it looked like a busy quarter. Lot of stuff.
Not gonna slow down for a while, but pretty self-explanatory in the zoning. Fourteen building permits in the first quarter. Did have one in the airport zone. And worked real well to send off an email to Don and Menson. And we just go back and forth and do a review and works pretty, pretty quick.
Bless you.
Did have a going out of business permit this last quarter, change of seasons. And a rural enterprise permit, country arms and ammo down in Washington 30. And then the Board of Adjustment with the request for the variance on the height of that tower or leg. We're also starting into, let's see, there's a Census Bureau permitting report. It's the season to get ready for the 2020 census. And that's just gonna be a, a long process. Next year's probably gonna be the toughest one for me. This year's just been kind of a, we give them some permitting data and they send out kind of an awareness, they have an awareness program. And then in the fall, they'll have a training program on their, on their addressing requests. Then next year, we'll have to verify all the addresses in the county. And depending on how well, how good a data they have, it can be quite a process. They're not the easiest people to work with as far as their, not the people themselves, but the, the process is not the easiest, so...
Do you have to verify the ones within the corporate limits too?
Yeah.
What, do you go through the cities to do that then, or...
Uh, we, we got, we've had, we have all the records. We have all the address points. So, we can do a comparison with their data. It's just easier for me to do it than the cities to try and do it. So, that'll be in 2018. And then we'll have to actually get, verify then the, the boundaries, the, of all the tracks. Make sure that they all line up with the city limits, like Templeton's done some annexation and a little bit. So, we gotta make sure everything lines up with their, their Census Bureau tracks. So, it'll be a fun couple of years. Actually, the year of the census is no problem for me, but just getting ready for it.
Previous.
Yeah. So, also, coming up in zoning, the floodplain, the new floodplain maps become official in September. And so, between now and then, we have to adopt some new language in the floodplain ordinance. And I've really, I've scheduled it to be done in, in July because we're, we don't have any money left in, in zoning to, to do that. And since we have till September, I just, I'm just gonna bump it out to July. They've given us the wording that we need, so it'll be just more of a formality to adopt the wording that DNR says we need for the floodplain.
How much applications has it been to try to argue these floodplanes out?
None.
There has not been any opposition?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, I thought maybe there might be some...
No, and, and you know, we sent out a letter to all the people that had buildings in those areas that, that I could find, you know, way back, probably last year, when they were first going through that. And we had a couple of people in town that had questions about it. You know, we had a couple of public meetings with DNR. Nobody showed up except for a couple of people in town.
It's gonna change their insurance rates and lots of things won't...
It could, you know, if they, if they go to build in it or want to build in it. And some people, you know, think that's a, a good thing. There's, there's people that have said, I tried to get flood insurance, but they said, you're not in it, so therefore they couldn't. And so, this will...
Have some good with it too.
Yeah, it'd have some good with it as well.
Okay.
But that'll be, we'll probably come back in July with that for you guys to amend that ordinance on. In GIS, getting kind of talked about the...
Wait, back up. What's this modification to wind towers in Mid-America?
Yeah, they're gonna come in next week. They're, they want to extend their blades. They're gonna put some new equipment in on some of the ones up here between here and Brita. I, I think that's it. As I haven't, he hasn't shown me which ones they're looking at. But they're gonna extend the blades a little bit. And so, what I've told him is that, that if they extend the blades and it either violates airspace over adjacent property or the road right of ways, then they're gonna have to come for an adjustment. He was telling me then that they would probably not do those and just modify the ones that wouldn't have an impact. But he's coming in this week to, so we can kind of talk about which ones are gonna be modified.
So, it's like you have more power to generate than probably?
I think so. Give them a little more...
So, that will also increase the value of the tax effect?
It could.
How much are they gonna extend it, you know?
I can't remember if it's eighteen feet.
Really?
See, that's what's on my mind, but like I said, he's coming this week, so I'll know for sure.
Holy cow. You gotta make sure they don't go off the ground, don't they?
Some of them have kind of a, like a back hook to it.
They got a, yeah, they got a hook.
There's some of them that got a new style, yeah, a new style. If you look at the ones over, uh, by Grand Junction, I think, well, yeah, even these down here have a different, different blade design.
Yeah.
And that's probably what they're doing. And then they're gonna replace their equipment too.
See, those are longer blades down there too. And they're...
They're just a bigger...
They have more generator up at the top too.
But at any time, you're, you're only really extending the, you know, if you extend all the blades, you know, eighteen feet, you're, you're really only extending the height of the thing by eighteen feet. You're not doing it, you know, it isn't like you're, gotta multiply it by the number of blades or anything.
Right.
So, at any one time, it's just eighteen feet.
But the problem, you're also extending the downside that blade do.
Right. We don't have any regulations on the downside.
Well, you don't?
No.
You think they'd have to keep so much clearance if somebody wouldn't drive underneath there to get...
Yeah, well, I think that probably just more of a, of a factor of efficiency. They don't want them that close to the ground, so...
Before you jump out of zoning, I'll back up to that airport a little bit. You said you called Don and visited with him about these permits. He's just the manager of the airport. Is that true?
That's, that's my contact.
And isn't this, and I've heard this before, this is a joint effort between us and the city? So, why is the city not involved here? Do you keep them in the loop at all times on a building permits type thing?
Uh, not, not the city. I do the airport.
Okay.
Because the city, the agreement actually says that the county will do it.
The county will do it, okay.
And so, when I get an application in, I send Don a copy because they haven't really designated anybody, you know, from the Zone Airport Commission to contact.
So, if he has a difference of opinion on what you have, let me ask this question. Can, can you, do you override it?
Well, it'll go to the Board of Adjustment, actually. If there's a...
Because he's, he's not an elected person.
No, and typically the letters, the letters I get of approval are from Greg Zeman, who is on the commission.
Okay.
So, we haven't had any disagreements.
Well, no, I'm just, just trying to put this all together.
Understand the whole situation.
Yeah, a little bit better.
Like on this one, on this one, for instance, this storage building lays inside that most protected area.
Okay.
And it was, again, it's more of a courtesy. I knew, I knew that the, the height on that wasn't gonna be an issue, but I just sent it to them so they know what's going on. And they usually send me a letter back saying, yeah, they agree. I just did a, another tower, well, we got a couple of towers. One, for instance, going out, out here at DOT for this new communications network, four-hundred-foot tower at a DOT. That's not in my jurisdiction at all, including the airport. But I did...
That's up there.
Call them to let them know what was going on with it. They're also gonna put one up down Templeton at the DOT station east of Templeton out by, close to Highway 71. We found out that since the state is putting it up, we have no authority to tell them they can't. But we have required that they send both the airport and us a copy of the FAA determination on it.
Well, it's good to keep everybody in the loop, the danger on it, just...
Yeah, yeah. And like the other day, we had another little tower down by Manning. It's over a hundred feet, so I just sent them a copy of it and said, here's what's going on. And they'll send me a letter back and saying, yeah, no problem.
Okay, we're good, thanks.
That's how it works most of the time.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else on zoning?
No.
GIS again, a lot of maps this last quarter. And as I said, coming up, we got the census, so that'll be mostly GIS-based information. On IT, we had the telephone system go in. I think it's fairly well calmed down. I don't know, I haven't heard any major problems lately. We were having some problems with, somebody call in and they'd answer the phone and they weren't there. And they'd call back and they still weren't there. They've done a couple firmware upgrades on their Adtran and they think it's, it's fairly well fixed. So, hopefully, that's something I don't have any, yeah, control over or, or knowledge of, so stay out of their equipment. I can do some, I can do some programming, you know, the phone sets and things like that, but...
Fairly, fairly smooth transition?
Fairly. They spent a few extra days here. But part of, part of the issue on, on our side is that we had a static IP system and telephones work better in a dynamic system where they, they just get their IP address assigned to them. So, we did get a consultant in to help us to kind of split up our system. We have the telephones on one system that's DHCP and we have our regular computers and servers on a static IP system, so it's kind of a hybrid. So, there were several changes that needed to be made. And they were, they were good changes, but still took us a while to work through them. HIPAA has been a real issue in the last quarter or two, and it'll be coming up. Using that new software that we got, that Verona software that enables us to go in and identify all the files and folders that have HIPAA and CGS data in them that need to be protected has been really helpful. Been able to do some changes in the directory structures and permissions to tighten the security up on those files. Got to decide, I guess, what's going on. I haven't heard any final word on how much of the community services data that we're gonna have to maintain and for how long. So, at the, at the minimum, we'll revoke everybody's privileges except for the domain administrators to get in those folders, so, you know, they can sit there for a long time. I just haven't heard how, how long we have to keep them.
Sure.
So, but that's been an issue there too. Also, a program that we received from the state, EVMS program, it's a, it's one that scans all the computers and looks for vulnerabilities, mostly in updates. When they first gave it to us, we had a, it gives a score to the vulnerability in each, each PC. And, you know, it's quite high, which most peoples are when they first get the program. So, it enables you then to go back and go in and look at each vulnerability ranked, you know, which ones you need to address first. So, we've been able to, to bring that, that risk down quite a bit in the last three months I've been able to work with it. So, that's primarily where I'm focusing on the IT side is the EVMS program and the Veronis and being able to review those logs because again, HIPAA, part of the thing, their big focus right now is, do you review your logs on, on who has access? Did anybody try to access confidential information? So, that's where my focus has been more. Louis is more on the technical side with setting up the computers and doing a lot of work with the Sheriff's Department here lately, so...
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, a lot of time. Might as well flip on over to that. You know, see, Mike, again, my, up there at the top, we're talking about computer maintenance and repair, that forty-nine point eight six, that's my time. Again, it's mostly in that EVMS and Veronis projects and reviewing those logs. It just takes a lot of time. It's not a, just a quick fix and done. And it's something that we need to be doing and need to have been doing.
So, so when you're doing that, you're just reviewing the process?
Reviewing the logs and... Reviewing the logs and making sure...
So, that's, that's an ongoing thing?
It's an ongoing, yeah.
I mean, so that's not, you know...
No, it's, it's not...
That's not gonna go away, that numbers, those, you're gonna continually have to do that.
In about half your time. And you should probably factor half your time from now on?
But won't that time come down as you get these logs all caught up and stuff?
Hopefully. I mean, you know, on the EVMS side especially, where you're looking at the threats, the risks in each computer, the more, of course, you know, as soon as you don't patch something, then you're out...
Something else comes in.
You're out of compliance, yeah. We try and keep, all the PCs that the employees use should automatically update. Every time they have a Windows update, they'll automatically update. We can't do that with the servers because especially some of them that have to run twenty-four seven, like the ambulance servers and the sheriff's servers and things like that, that you don't want shutting down. You don't want them just to restart willy-nilly or whenever Microsoft decides that they should restart, especially the comm center when you're in the middle of an emergency call, you don't want your server rebooted. So, we do all those manually. We've got twenty-five servers I have to go through and manually update. So, I usually do about five at a time because we take a snapshot of that server, which adds to our storage. And then the next day, I'll go in and delete those snapshots and update five more so that we aren't overloading the storage with the snapshots to servers. So, it takes a lot of time to just do that. And of course, I start coming in at seven several years ago in order to do those kind of updates and when nobody else was here. Now, we've got two department heads that come in at seven-thirty and...
Do your windows get smaller?
Yeah, it gets a little smaller, so. And we can't stay afterwards because some of them stay after, so Louis here till five. But, so we got it covered here from seven to five, but seems like always something So, then again, down at the bottom side, you see the two big courses of servers and the network take up half our time. And then for the Sheriff's Department, you're really looking at the communications center there, four-two, four-point-two-seven and, and twenty-five percent down there at the bottom. So, you're looking at about twenty-nine, thirty percent of our time just from the Sheriff's Department. And they're going through a lot of changes.
New people.
New people, new technology, you know, new equipment and, you know, so it all...
Kind of calm down a little here.
You, you would think it does, but it doesn't.
It does.
So, anyhow, that's my story.
Very good, Carl.
Any other questions for Carl? Very good, Carl.
No, you've got a lot of work to do.
All right.
Just ongoing.
Probably better get to it.
Have a good day, Carl.
Okay, next, Mr. Paulson.
Next lucky soul in the barrel.
Morning. Guys seem to be in pretty good mood this morning.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't count on it.
So, what's going on?
Got any of the road raver stuff?
I got, I got prices for one, but I don't have any money till next year.
Or the year after.
Or the year after. I'd be okay too. Oh, let's see here, drains. Been quite a bit of drain activity.
More drain activity.
What's Neil Drain eighty-three, is there any?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, yeah.
Make sure he puts something in his minutes for that, would you, Courtney?
I think we're gonna talk about it.
I think we're gonna talk about it.
All right, good, perfect, even better.
I need to get your cell phone. I called, called several of them on Drain ninety, which is one of George Johnson Farms for, it's Martinez Ground. And I'd looked at it earlier with George's son last fall. There were shallow tile and holes in the tile and broken tile. I made a guess that George is gonna have to do roughly a six thousand dollars worth of work to get those tile replaced. He was, he was gonna replace probably a hundred and eighty feet of twelve-inch tile. And he spent a day out there working, patching holes and pushing dirt over, so he'll send us a bill when, when he gets done with that. I think you probably know George too, don't you?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
His whole crew?
His whole crew. He's seventy.
Where's that located?
That's Drain ninety and Section twenty-eight of Richland. Twenty-eight of Richland. Jeff Sporer called in, talked to Becky about a blowout in Drain sixty-seven, which is in Section five of Union Township.
Of Union?
Of Union. He, he was gonna mark the location. That'll probably be kind of a small one. I'm just working on the estimate for assessments and I'm gonna put in a thousand dollars for that, but those, those blowouts usually run probably five hundred at a minimum and generally upwards of a thousand. Next one is Drain thirty-three in Section twenty-seven of Sheridan. Steve Daniels called in and the hole that we fix every year is, is there again.
What section is that?
Section twenty-seven of Sheridan. About the same location. I'm sure it's not the same, same location because it's usually just seams blowing out. It's pretty depressurized.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, joints, connectors, connecting, connecting points.
Is there some other issues happening or does it make you continue to be doing that every year?
Just...
You think it's just joints?
I think it's joints, pressure.
And they just blow out.
It's not too far from the outlet. We've surveyed the outlet. The outlet's got fall. It's an open ditch. Thank you.
How big a tile is that? It's twenty-four?
Yeah.
That's a big guy.
That's a big guy, yeah. Some of those, if they get on a little curve, and that one actually could be on a curve, that map might not be, the, the old map kind of shows a curve where the old ditch is, and I'm not sure, but some of those seams are, you know, an inch and a half wide.
They get a little bend, wide.
Get a little bend and as, as pressurized as these tile is.
Are you, there's a lot of pressure anymore. There's a lot of things up to new, old, everything.
When we were working on that Drain fifteen last week, there was a hole and it had blown up and it was running out on the road and just really making quite a mess. And they went out behind the hole to see, assumed that the tile was blocked at that hole. They punched a probe through it. It was plastic tile that was replaced and it just shot up like a geyser. And here, here the hole was two hundred and some feet, actually three hundred and some feet down the line.
The blockage.
Where it was blocked and all that pressure was coming from that. And they, they, they worked at it from the other, other end. But, yeah, they...
So, what was blockage then?
Tree roots.
Was it tree roots?
Yeah. It flowed about a half of a tile and the other half was, was shooting up.
Oh, Section twenty-seven, I got that.
Next one is Drain seventy-seven. Joanne called in behind her property on Granada. There's some trees that have fallen down from, I guess I call those old Bureau, the Bureau apartments there. There was some on that side. They've fallen down and they're laying across Drain seventy-seven.
That's that open drain.
That's that open drain, Grant, between kind of Grant Road and Granada and there runs underneath Grant Road and a big box culvert to, heads on down through town, Grant Park and on out. That's an interesting, I think we could send the crew down there, get in, get in and just cut those trees up in chunks and lay them on the bank if they do, do float down.
Can you hear from another person on seventy-seven? Carol?
I did. Another person called. In fact, it's Brink's. What was his first name? Jody. Al's, one of Al's brothers. They were beaver working where, where he lived between Twelfth and Grant Road down there. Actually, he likes to trap and so he was gonna trap the beaver and we shouldn't have any bill or anything. He was just gonna take... He was just gonna take care of it.
Just see any trees where he's burning pit? Tell him to take them.
Yeah. My Max Winks mother in Littledale, I think Frieda's her name, in Drain 26 in Section 65 of Sheridan, by Main and 4th Street. Over the years, we've been having kind of a ponding problem there. There's a 5-inch tile, and water comes in ponds near your yard, and it kind of does inundate our driveway. Now I'm in with that drizzly rain that we had, that 3 inches.
That's Section what again?
Section 35.
35, okay. I didn't have it. I looked, I didn't have it right here.
If, if we get a point to where things dry out a bit, I think we're gonna go in there and do some prospecting and see what we can find. We've got money in the drain. At one time, we were gonna camera that drain, but the people never showed up to do the camera, and we had some dry weather in between. But it's one of them in-town drains. It's got trees around it. It's just, it's a bad place.
Most likely tree roots everywhere.
Most likely, yeah.
Where was you getting the camera from?
Remember when we did over at Glidden? Remember when we did that, when they did their storm sewer implode? I can't remember the name of it.
Well, I mean, somebody's off-pit runner, and I got cameras. Some of the plumbers.
Some of the plumbers do.
I don't know how long, how long, and they could do, but...
Yeah. We worked with those guys, and we, we did part of Drain 29 and Glidden, and it was, it was real helpful. At least it showed us what to do, and it was in a bigger tile, but... Does that Rusty have a camera?
He does. I don't like, I think Sarge has got one either.
Yeah.
Different ones. Temple Hardware, they've got one. I don't know how long they've got, but...
Yeah.
Sure cuts down on exploratory time.
And I really don't think they're that expensive.
I don't know anymore.
No, I, we've got a pretty good amount of money in that drain, and that might be a way to go. I can give Temple Hardware a call.
Well, you call around, I'm not, I just, I think, I know that, I'm pretty sure Sarge has got one, and I'm pretty sure Temple's got one.
I bet Reese would have one too.
I bet Reese has got one.
Yeah, wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah, I don't know how long, they may not have very long ones, but...
Probably not, yeah.
Probably 150, maybe their max, I mean, from the house to...
We're gonna get in there with our tape, with our locator, and run it up and down, locate it visually on the surface, and if we run into a dead end, we can...
Then you can tell where it's at.
You know where it starts disappearing, yeah. You're never real accurate, but you're in the ballpark.
Could be a broken tile. This, this one's only a 5-inch tile too. I think that's about the extent of the new ones. I've, I've got some other ones to report on, only in partiality, on Neil's drain, on Drain 66, in Tim Reber's ground, and I think it's Section 14 of Richland. We looked at that, we did some surveying, and the tile's real shallow in the waterway, and it's broken. I talked to Warren Tyler, who's worked in that area before, and he gave me an idea of what it would run, just depending upon, more on materials and what, what we use. We'd probably wanna use that double-wall plastic, which is about 775 a foot. He suggested using concrete from Hancock Concrete or the old Lakeview Concrete, but that, that would run about 1390 a foot, which is... Which, most drainage districts, this fellow's worked in a lot of drainage districts to the north, worked in bigger drainage district jobs, they do put concrete tile in for their larger replacement. And that's originally what they were, and the concrete's got a lot of longevity to it. We've, we've kind of just been patching with plastic over the years. Haven't done that much total re-dos.
How big a drain is that?
That's a pretty big drain. It's Drain 66. It's, it's the one Neil's in. It's got two big branches on it. I'd say it's maybe...
So how many feet are you talking there?
I've been kind of agonizing over that a little bit, but I think probably in the neighborhood of 480 feet, and just with the figures he gave me, working by the hour, I think we can probably get it done for about 8,500. Be something we could do ourselves, the county, but we might just as well let work like that go to the private contractors.
How much did he say it was?
About 8,500 is about what I'd guess. About half labor and half materials, and then a little extra for hookups.
What size was that again?
Fifteen.
Fifteen inch.
Fifteen inch.
Do you want the original assessment list on that there?
Maybe bring that with me, but... I left that sheet at home. We don't, we don't have enough to, in the balance to do it, so...
Is that kind of, where's that, is that kind of out in the middle? There's no trees around it or anything?
No, no, it's just, it's just a waterway issue.
I mean, you don't want concrete tile around trees.
So is this one where the farmer changed the waterway, or what?
No, I think it's an erosion thing. I look back into the 1980s and 90s, into the old aerial photos, and the waterway seemed to have the same configuration. He did some smoothing and whatnot there, and it's just kind of right on the edge, and it's, there's just a whole lot of water that comes in and really raises heck. We have trouble in that same area every year. We've surveyed it, and I think, you know, we can move it off to the southeast, get it out of the waterway, and get some decent cover on it. Be the time to do it. I, I think, it's Bruce is who it is. He's, he's available probably in May. A lot of them aren't available, and he's worked over in this area before. Probably gonna have to backhoe it, and it's too big to put in with a styling machine.
Oh, really?
Yeah, 15-inch.
Fifteen inch would be...
Twelve's the legacy.
Yeah, it's a newer machine. Some of the older ones can get out there, do 16s a bit.
Yeah.
But...
Some of them all wheel, well, chains.
Open wheels, yeah.
I looked at the concrete option, and I came up with about $18,000. I'd do a longer stretch with that, to do that. But I, I, over the years, we've done so much work, so much patching, patching in there. There's nothing real good, and it would, it would maybe seem a little too much to put a real high-quality chunk of concrete in, in there, and have all these other issues on the side of it. Because probably when, when these drains do get done, there'll be a parallel system put in alongside of them. You'll also have to crush the old tile. I think it'd probably be best to work by the hour, within, he told me his hourly rates, 'cause I think we'd get the best price that way. We don't know as far as crushing the tile or what we're gonna have for hookups coming across the... But my, my guess is it's gonna be somewhere in the $8,000 range.
So is that the, is that the section you're gonna replace there?
It is, yeah.
So are you wanting for approval today, or?
Today or pretty soon. I don't think, you wanna wait for the rest of the board, board is back, yeah. 'Cause I don't think, I don't think any fixing's gonna get done till, till May, probably.
What do you guys wanna do? You wanna get there, wait till Neil and them get it back?
Well, what's, what are the, what's gonna be the drawbacks? I mean, why, why wouldn't we approve it today? The amount, the dollar amount, is that in?
Approve the project.
Let me see.
It's gotta be done.
Yeah, one way or another.
You can't hardly see the, this is what the map, where the map said the tile was.
And so what are you, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna...
We're gonna come up into here.
And come across?
Yeah, come across, yeah. We had, had that surveyed up in here, coming clear from there, from the T up to here, and I think we can probably be a little more economical.
Is this a lower point, Dave, or is this the lower?
This is a higher point. The lower point's down. This is where the old tile is. We surveyed it, and used that new locator and ran it up and down there, and the depth figures, that was to the top.
Two, two inches?
To the flow line. That's 2.1 feet there.
2.1 feet.
And 15-inch tile, so it's got about that much cover on it.
Yeah.
Right in there, three feet in there.
Like I said, two inches.
She's a blah perma.
Yeah.
Can you, can we grab some more depth than that then too?
Yeah, where we tie in down here, I think it was 3.4 feet to, on the flow line of tile, and it's kind of a flat area, so it's, it's not gonna be the best. But we can have, you know, 15, 20 inches of cover down in here, and a, and real good cover up. On the other end, it was four feet up in here, so...
Doesn't do a lot of draw, and it freezes up early too.
Yeah.
So, so when you're down here at this 15 inches, is that in the waterway, or is that?
This is, this is pretty well the bottom, bottom of the waterway here, and this is coming up the slope here, so we're, we're in the waterway.
We're in the waterway.
But we're up on the side, and we've got another piece of tile to tie into there. And otherwise, a guy, I guess a guy could go downstream. But they've got, they've got that fixed pretty good right now. We've had issues at that location too.
Well, the only reason that I'd put it off is because Neil's probably familiar with it, since it's...
More in his area.
Yeah, more in his area, and, and...
Well, so I'd say it's up to you guys. I...
Yeah.
Let's push that one off till next week.
Yeah, I think so.
If you don't mind, Dave.
No.
You're not gonna do anything till probably May?
No, and hopefully by next week, the next one I'm gonna show you with the trees in it, this one that Terry Hoffman turned in. This is...
These are all ones that we've talked about before.
They are, yes. This is the one that we're out there investigating right now. The black line is where the tile, where we found it at. This is where the map shows it had zigging and zagging across the waterway. So it isn't the water, waterway. We, they haven't found any trouble. There's trees up here. We're thinking that's where the trouble is. Again, this is another 15-inch line. What is that drain? Drain 18, Section 11 of Union.
So what are we gonna do with this one?
Hopefully by the end of the week, we'll, we'll have discerned what the issue is with this one. So next week, we can maybe say, get that same guy to do both of these, just get them, get them done. 'Cause this one could be, it could be a big one too. It could be 400, 500, 600 feet of tile replacement.
But if it's true, it's what you just have to, you're gonna go round it then, or what?
The tenant is gonna kill the trees.
Or do you think there's other problems there?
I, I think it's tree roots. Tree roots or roots from the grass in the waterway.
So if it's that, would, why would you replace the tile then?
Because, once they get in there, you just...
You can't repair it.
Oh, you gotta tear them out anyway.
You gotta tear them out anyway.
Even if you try to jet it out, you're still gonna get 100% out.
And it's a big tile, and it's just, yeah. If it, if it were a small tile and smaller roots, maybe you could get in there with a jet and do it, you know, like a 5- or 6-inch tile. But those, those big ones, you're just usually...
They don't work then. But if it is the tree roots, it's gonna narrow it down to maybe a couple hundred feet and be done.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, those tree roots that we pulled up and bred at that time.
Yeah.
That was just a ball of fine, little fine roots. But I can see if you can get some, if you get these big things, you know, that are, it could be half inch to an inch. I don't know how you'd ever get those out of there.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's kind of what you're talking about.
And surprisingly, they really interrupt the flow.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
Well, we remember what, what we saw at breed.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm sure there's fine roots, but there also could be some, some big stuff.
There, there was over at the last drain that we worked on, and...
I mean, that's probably concrete tile there.
That is.
Then that, if that root penetrated, that has also probably shoved the tile a little bit too, and if, once the root died and you do get it out, you're still gonna have that gap, which makes dirt infiltration come in anyway, so you just as well touch them all up.
I talked to a caller, Tyler from Green County that does a lot of tiling over in there, and asked him if he had a, had a root cutter. He has a jet, he doesn't have a, doesn't have a root cutter, but I asked him about this particular location with the larger tile. I said, "What would you do?" And he said, "You're gonna have to replace the tile."
You're gonna know more when you dig that up, though?
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it could possibly be that...
Have to discern just how much we're gonna need, 'cause we'll have to prepare it materialize. So hopefully I can come back next week with the two of these and say, "This is what we need here, and this is what we need there." Yeah, I, I don't have any other review for fixing it.
So you need approval on the first five then?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Awesome.
Awesome.
Been moved to second, approve the drains, any further discussion? If not, all those favor signatures, I would say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion to approve.
Got two utility permits. First one with Raccoon Valley Electric Co-op, they're burying it underground from 290th and Velvet West to New Fashion Pork at 30336 290th, in the south shoulder of 290th. This is all in Section 9 of Union Township.
So you're going from 290th to Velvet, and which way are you going?
West.
West, okay.
To 290th, and, and along 290th, I mean, in the south road ditch. Decent aerial photo and map of that. The next one is from West Central Iowa Rural Water. They're born diagonally across Section 4 Pleasant Valley, in the southeast corner of it. I guess it's 410, a 2-inch water pipe, serve the north properties.
What is the location again, the section?
The intersection of Phoenix and 230th. Pleasant Valley Township. They're saying, the north properties, I think there must be some of those acreages out there on Phoenix Avenue, that's, you know, south of the airport. That's down kind of north of the old Teegis Pit.
Okay.
You're gonna board this root then?
They'll board, then they'll go off on private right-of-way.
Yeah.
Stay out of our right-of-way, which is super.
Perfect, get out of it.
Yeah.
They like private right-of-way, water desks, don't they?
Key, you've heard the two permits. Is there a motion to approve that?
They'll make the motion we approve the two utility permits.
Let's get that motion.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signature, I would say aye.
Aye.
You're just wondering, Raccoon Valley?
It's great that you've got that map.
This map?
Yeah. I didn't make a copy of this one. I'm...
The gravel map.
The old gravel map is... I was talking to Monica Becker last week about a number of things, and also talking with... And also talking with Hallets, uh you know, we, we talked about Hallets. They're, they're saying that the first of June is when they're gonna start on our fifty-six thousand ton uh, processing that. That put wall leg.
They're gonna get going, huh?
They're gonna get going, yeah, and uh. If I understand him right, I think we can go either pay as you go or pay for our pile. We were talking about putting a forty thousand ton pile up there, and then the remaining sixteen would be pay as you go out of the community pile. Which the community pile last year ran dry, and that's why we still don't have the sixteen or the forty. We, I talked with Monica about Luco, you've got Luco on your, you see that or not?
Yeah.
On your map up there, after they get done working at the Reinhardt pit, that's where they're gonna go. They're gonna put some gravel up for uh, Sack County and I believe Ida County. I don't know if they're gonna put any.
Hmm, we got it this spring, I'm gonna say maybe February. Do you have it in your drawer? Oh, I can hide from the camera once.
Um, she's, she priced me twenty, twenty thousand tons or any amount of tons, I guess, of what we would want. At five dollars and ninety-one cents a ton, uh ten, ten percent limestone mixed into that. That should make it pretty comparable with uh, the hallet material mixing that in. It should get enough coarse material in it to uh, make them look about the same. Hallets, Hallets were at six dollars, which is kinda their old price, I think if they.
This is at Luco?
That's at Luco, yeah. And you can see the location of that, that Luco, it's, it does, it is kind of a relative competitor with Hallets. I'm, I guess I'm thinking that it might be okay to put some up there. It's because we've had such difficulty getting it at Hallets. Now, that could all change, but, but I don't know that it will.
Well, I went by there last Tuesday night, Halts hadn't done anything yet.
No, and, and if, if we do wind up getting our forty thousand ton pile. We might wanna haul all that out on the road, we might wanna haul that down the west side of the county, all the way from the north line. Up in uh, Guelph Township to the south line down in Ewald. It's uh, makes good sense, it's a good shot down the OCL road to haul that. And we, if we can leave it up there and have some for the beginning of next year, that would be good too. But I just, these are all unanswered questions, I don't know what's gonna happen. And I'm kinda thinking about some at Luco, just for an insurance policy that we would have some over there. We, if we didn't do that, we could bring it from Finley, we've got some there, we've got uh.
They were home out there Friday.
Outta here, yeah, or we could bring it from Reinhardt, we've got a, you know, a good stock, we'll have a hundred thousand tons there. We could bring it down there too, and it's really, it's about equidistant. Though it, it seems like a, a way to go, so maybe I'm being unnecessarily conservative. To put that up there just as kind of a insurance policy, but.
At Luco?
At Luco.
But you know, you've had trouble getting out of that wall leg in the past, you know, they shut you down here the other year.
They did.
I think, I don't think you're out of line on that.
Yeah, I just, I'm.
Cause you are.
I was thinking it was a great idea last week, but then at the day I was a little.
Conservative now.
Getting conservative and uh, yeah. It's, it's not good to run out of gla, gravel and really, we're starting to build a lot of stockpiles that have, uh you know, cause. The only one we've really got is Reinhardt and Finley. But if we do Luco and if they do Hallets, if we come down here and we get some Sparks and we get Toyn, we'll be, we'll be pretty flush, we'll have maybe.
I think this would work coming down here.
It will, yeah, it will and it does, and it should be comparable material. I think she said, oh yeah, here, uh, I think Sack County is putting up maybe sixty thousand tons there.
At Luco?
At Luco, yeah. I don't think I have that on this.
Why am I thinking that Lu, I thought that Luco was about finished out, or which one am I thinking of?
I thought that too, but I think they found more on the north side of the road.
Oh, okay. They've been there quite a while.
And another thing I asked, I asked Hallets if it would be okay if we would bring a private trucker in there, say if we would use Stratford's to truck in there. Uh, Stratford hires at least three Carroll County people, they hire Meister, Earl Beck and Danner. And they truck with them, so we get some of our own people hauling if we did that rather than uh, you know, going to somebody. That Hallets could put together, and they said, no, they had no problem with us doing that. That, that private haul, it's been a while since we've private hauled on this side, but due to dry weather. And actually concentrating down more in the Coon Rapids area, we kinda shorted that west half of the county. Really for the last couple of years, and the only way to get a decent amount of material on the roads is to, is to. Get some private trucks and haul it along with their own trucks.
So they, they dump right on the road then?
They dump right on the road, yeah.
Okay.
And uh.
So this, this Luco, is that, is that, is that material that we have purchased up there already?
No, no, we don't, they'd have to make it, and that's where they're going next, and that's, that's kinda what got me thinking. Once they finish Reinhardt, which they should do this week, they're gonna move up to Luco. And they're gonna process material for, I believe, SAC and for Ida and uh.
Okay, I got you.
And so they'll be there making materials, so if we wanted some more material, kinda a guaranteed pile of material, we could have it. Hallets is saying they're gonna start the, the first of June. The reason I'm uh, you know, I probably could spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on contract haul. Over here, uh, which, you know, is, wouldn't be any more money to contract haul it than it would be with our own trucks. When you get right down to it, there'd be an expense that way and would get it done, but uh, I might have to do a budget amendment. Next year to pay for that, just depending how it came in.
So how much you wanting to put at Luco, another forty thousand?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah, twenty at five ninety-one, that's mixed with ten percent limestone.
I don't think that's a bad idea, I don't either. Cause you're gonna basically take most of the Hallets and work that west half over pretty hard, the west half of the county pretty hard with it.
Yeah.
Well, look, look already here, he's, Hallets, he can't go do it until June. Well, I mean, plus with me, if you had that up there, that uh, Luco, you could be pulled from there if you had to.
We could, yeah, yeah, I.
I don't think it hurt to have some up there.
I think that's kinda what I needed to hear, it's, it's not a, not a huge amount, it's just, it could be.
So you need a motion to authorize purchase, twenty thousand ton at five ninety-one.
And so, and that's gonna be mixed with limestone?
Ten percent.
Ten percent limestone, so where do they get that from?
They'll get that from the Griffith Quarry, they'll bring in two and, two to three inch rock and uh. So they'll bring in larger rock and they'll mix that in the crusher, so then you won't get, like mixing the stuff that we mix has got a lot of fines in it. Not which is a bad thing, but uh, this is probably the best way to fatten up the, the coarse end of it. Which makes, makes your gradation look a lot better, it's unbelievable even what a minor set will do to, you know, on paper anyway, to make your gradation look better. Should, should make them, make it a competitive gradation, the, the Hallet stuff is, is pretty good. The only thing bad I can say about it is it's, it's awfully clean. And you wouldn't think you want dirty gravel, but really you need something to kinda.
Hold it together a little.
Knit it down and bring it together.
Okay.
Okay, so there.
Need for a motion? I would make the motion, we put twenty thousand. At Luco for reserve. You state, do you see fit to do that with?
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dave?
I don't think so, I think, well, there probably is, but I don't. We're busy doing driveways right now, a little bit of gravel hauling, and I think I'll have ten driveways to do. Lot of drainage work, I think this is maybe the busiest thing as far as drainage work and, and a little bigger stuff, you know. The way it looks, looks like we'll have these two big jobs and then the one big job that we did with the county totaled that one up, that ran about.
They're probably gonna be anxious to get those done too.
They are, yeah.
Planting season's upon us.
Yeah, so.
And pre-con is identified, what do you think?
It is, yeah.
And I, I think I wanna try to be there to.
That'll be, that'll be good, yeah. Be kind of interesting. We usually don't have the board at the pre-con, but if, if you're, if you're interested.
Where's it at?
Come just to our office.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, yeah, yeah, meet the contractor and talk to them and really, you know, without this not being a federal aid job. There won't be hardly any formalities, we won't have that, we can just find out when they're coming and which way they're gonna go and how long it's gonna take and.
Find the town and make stuff out.
We probably need to look at that uh, railing driveway too sometime.
Oh, that, that one. Long time ago we talked about.
Yeah, I don't know how long ago it was.
Yeah, yeah, we went up there and looked and didn't come up with anything.
Didn't you?
No, no, that was, shoot, was that a year ago maybe?
Yeah. You know what the situation was, they got that north driveway.
It's kinda like this, since they graded that road, and they wanna move it further south, where they can go in.
I mean, we can go up there and look at that.
I don't think it'll require.
Tube?
Tube.
Yeah, I don't know, it's really hard to tell.
If I come out there, you give me some maps and I'd get a bridge and stuff, some information. I am thinking, I don't know if I will yet or not, but I'm thinking about going up to Wall Lake tomorrow. Senator, so the other one, I might just bounce off there, Wall Lake.
So, would you like a picture of the existing, what, what do you think you'd want?
What do you got?
I've got a lot of stuff, but uh.
Picture of just the, the rod, reride ending up that, you have a picture of that, it's just disgusting when you see it, just disgusting.
Yeah.
You can make me a copy of that if you did.
I could, yeah. I'll dig around, I've got.
I, and I think, I'm thinking I might go up there and just wait to the end and try to capture.
Uh-huh. Certainly can't hurt.
Well, ask them what we, help us out, what do we do about this?
Yeah.
They're unreasonable.
The, the, the no recourse is the most aggravating thing.
Yeah.
It's not that we're afraid to spend money, it's not afraid to work with them, we just.
Well, it's like, we're, we're putting the biggest effort forward.
And there's no response.
Well, we have to take out, we have to get rid of a, a crossing, you know, and we've only got five crossings.
And they're the best ones we got.
And they're the best ones we got by, you know, that aren't restricting any traffic.
Well, it's, yeah, and it's just a matter of time till the Kenny Huffman underpass. That concrete's leaning over so far now.
Yeah.
It, it's just a matter of time till that falls in.
And that's gonna close.
And then, he's trapped, he can't go south, he can't go north, he can't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Hopefully there's no need for a fire truck or an ambulance at that building, cause you can't get there.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't see that side of it, it's just.
Anyway, if you would do that for me. So, so when are you gonna stop by?
Uh, well, I'll probably, maybe I'll pick up tomorrow noon or something.
Okay.
I gotta be at for another meeting tomorrow. I'll probably one o'clock.
That sounds real good.
It's a cost, that's a lot of work thinking of. You know, I, I just think I'm gonna try that, I'm gonna say.
A billion and a half versus two to three hundred thousand for that grade, if, if they don't force us to put signals in there, which is. Which would be ridiculous too. I was at Coon Rapids the other day, coming through on Friday night, the train was there. Actually pulls up real close to that crossing on that paved road going real slow.
Before it crosses?
Before it crosses.
Without any uh, crossarms or anything like that?
Walking speed on that paved road there, that Velvet Avenue with Coon Rapids.
Yeah.
Well, we had a special come out in town this week, and a grain train coming.
Uh-huh.
Actually had two, I think they had a four lot of the train too.
So what, would you say one train a day generally?
One going one way or the other, and then, then it's whenever those specials come out.
Uh-huh.
And that you don't know, and that's whenever somebody orders a grain train or orders a food.
I bet the yearly average isn't one point two a day.
Seven days a week?
Maybe right now, but there a couple weeks ago, a couple years ago, we were on that.
Yeah, but right now it's just.
Uh-huh.
In the fall and the spring, and occasionally they have some on plan, so.
But there was a time, there a couple years ago, they were shipping about two trains a week out of town.
Really? Specials? Yeah.
Well, they're all special, they don't come with a regular train.
Uh-huh. Thank you, alright, thanks Dave.
Thanks Dave.
Okay, next thing we have is approved plant, so we only have one, right? And this is the Kramer one?
Uh, Wink.
Wink, oh yeah, Wink. And that is just adding on to an acreage, this and acreage, acreage there, I will make a motion to approve the plant, we're second.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Next we have is a contract provided professional consulting services to Carroll County from the cost advisory services. And this is for our, to provide, they provide the service to turn up what our cost is, our share of costs that we provide to DHS. And that cost, that contract is four thousand.
Four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, it's a three-year contract, and that price has not changed, that's what it was.
We used to go on, who do you guys that? They're not shorter tied here, we used to go to uh, what would it call? They charge us about three times, and then we started going this out there, it hasn't changed. I would recommend it. I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
The same group we've been dealing with before.
Same group that we've been dealing with since we switched.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second, second, any further discussion? I think the name of the other company is Magella.
Yeah, I see, we've, since I've been here, it's been these guys.
Okay, any further discussion, if not, all of the favors signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Got uh, two copies to sign here.
We're at top, top there, you're gonna fill them. Okay, next we have the two thousand seventeen tax suspension list. And these are people for newcomers, also that has people that have been recommended by DHS that are qualified for this. The tax suspension rates that are suspended till there's, you get the money to pay for them or through an estate. Which, that we actually create a lien against that depravity, this is a confidential list, so.
I'll make a motion.
There'll only be in three names on it, and I think in the past we've had four, five.
Yeah, we lost a couple names.
So, you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the tax suspension list, any further discussion, if not, all of the favors signify by saying aye. Contrary, motion carried.
Please stand off.
I would recommend that you destroy it, destroy that when you get home. Okay, next we have.
Leave it here and have Courtney destroy it.
Oh, yeah, here.
Just put it right, put it all together, and she can just, if she would, have her run it through the mill. Thanks for being here.
Okay, next we have tax abatement resolution. This is a resolution in regard to, I don't know what this billboard looks.
I can give you a little explanation.
I didn't either.
So, we have two resolutions. The one with the four parcels on it is county farm, which is the standard, one that is done every year. The second one is a billboard. When the prior assessor was here, he decided that he was gonna assess the billboards in the county.
Oh, I didn't remember that.
There's not many counties that assess their billboards, very, very few. But he chose to do that, which is fine. But this particular parcel and billboard, the billboard's owner and address is unknown. So we can't even send up a bill because we don't know who owns it.
Nor do we know where it's at.
Nor do we, yeah. Well, we might know where, well, I don't know. No, I bet we don't know where it's at.
Should be a little partial.
Probably in Grant Township, maybe section thirty, if I'm reading the number correctly. But anyway, it's my understanding that the billboards are gonna be changed to go back the way they were. For years and years and years prior. So this is to remove that hundred and nineteen dollars because we don't know who owns it, we don't know where to send the bill.
So we have two resolutions?
We do have two resolutions.
This will be the last time for the Malauview.
Yeah, I don't know.
This is actually for the farm.
Well, and, and Malauview is on here too. I'm guessing that's seven, I don't know, I don't know which one the home's on, which parcel. It might be one, but, yeah, I don't look a little bit for next year. Yeah, I don't look a little, well, I don't know if the picture has the parcel number on it here.
It don't. That's the one I got, don't.
Yeah, it does, I understand. Those numbers will probably change next year because with this survey being done, it'll change the parcel numbers, so.
There'll probably be three instead of four.
Yeah, I would guess.
All right, so we'll start with the billboard resolution first. Is there a motion to approve the tax abatement on the billboard?
So move. Nah, I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Miners?
Yes.
Ruggles?
Aye.
Shetler?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. And then, so then next we have is the resolution in regard to the county farm taxes. Is there a motion to that effect?
Nah, so move.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? You have a question, Virginia?
Is this for the whole farm or just the part that Malauview is on?
This is for the whole farm.
Why?
It's been done this way for buku years.
Why? Don't you think you have enough rent to pay? And it's just not accounting, but the schools and DMAC and extension and the township are all cut out of taxes.
Well, you've asked that question every year and.
No, I didn't. I was, last year was, or the last time.
But it, like I said, I, you know, this has been done this way for years and years.
Well, is it fair?
If we charge them and the city and, and pay the school and the school, it's just a, it's just a circle that goes around and around. It doesn't, the dollar amounts.
No, it isn't a lot of money, but I get less rent, I don't get a tax abatement. Lots of farmers get less rent and don't get a tax abatement, and they have to pick up the difference, whatever it is.
Okay. Well, you've been heard, so. Any further, any other discussion? If not, it's been moved in second to approve the resolution. Roll call.
Miners?
Yes.
Ruggles?
Yes.
Shetler?
Yes.
Motion carries?
You have to find that too, Dean.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's just a circle. Yeah, and we're going in the circle. They all join the circle then. Then maybe a bite. I don't know what's in the, you don't have to explain the substance.
Yeah.
That's another.
I have standard.
That's standard.
Okay.
Process.
Next we have fiscal year eighteen substance abuse grant. And this is a grant that we get from Iowa, State of Iowa. And that we get, and it's a total of, oh, three thousand and some dollars if I can find it here. My eyes should get more. Why can't I see it?
I just, I just saw it, you know, I don't know where it went.
Well, I think it's on the other form.
Is it on the second, last page there? Fourteen thousand dollars?
No, that's too much.
Okay, it's, here it is, three, thirty-five hundred eighty-nine dollars.
There it is, yeah.
There you go.
And of that, we, that is our grant from the state, and then we match that with ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars for a total of fourteen thousand, three fifty-six. This is part of what we approve when we do our budget, the request with new opportunities, and we subcontract that to New Opportunities. So there's, there's a two-part for, first we approve this grant, and then we approve a subcontract with New Opportunities. So this is, that's what it basically is.
And I would ask that, wouldn't we, if, if and when you approve the grant, in that motion authorize Joanne Martin as the signatory? So she can do all the signing on it.
Because we've had issues with that.
Don't have the right person to sign the grant.
No, I tell you what, every, the way they want us to do is change it every year, whoever's this chair. And I'm gonna tell you what, a couple of years ago, when I was chair, we tried to get me to sign this thing through their website. This website is the most.
Yeah, that's why.
Unfriendly.
It's not used.
Yeah, I'll just leave it there. I could call it more than that, but that's the way it is. So, we need a motion to approve the grant and also authorize Joanne Martin to be the signature of this grant.
So move. I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favors signify the same aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carries.
I get just a stamp on that too.
Just a stamp?
Yeah, that just, we just keep that on file, but we have to rip it.
Okay, next we have is the substance abuse prevention service agreement. This is the contract with New Opportunities that we provide, that provides this service.
Oh, yeah, same amount as the grant.
Yes, same.
Yeah, right up there.
Oh, we need a motion to approve that or deny it.
I'll so move.
Okay, it's been moved.
I'll second that motion.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carries. As you can see, up here, they got the, the picture's sticking right up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We knew where to look.
Jean's signature on the back, please, sir.
All right. We're down to set another public hearing for a budget amendment. Courtney, you wanna explain what happened?
I will. Nothing we can control. After we did the last amendment, I heard from the jail, Carl, and Jason, they had other things. IT was some server things. Let me go get my file. I wanted to grab that before I came in here.
Where's the monies come from for these adjustments?
Other than my reserves, if we, it's just not a grant for it, but like in these cases, every one of these, well, except for that conservation comes out of capital.
That comes out of capital, their capital.
Out of their capital fund. Just, they don't have it in the budget.
But I think what she's.
In order for them to spend it, they have to, we agree to put it in their.
I think what she's gonna tell you that there's, like also, you've got, we've run out of money on meals because we've got more.
Inmates are way up.
Um, we're going over the budget by now.
Oh, okay, okay.
I was just gonna find Carl's email so I can explain to you why he needed additional funds. Can I get it right this time? Okay, so he's requesting four thousand dollars for consultant work on changes to our network switches to accommodate the new phone system and changes to the sheriff department accessing the server remotely for two of their programs.
So this is what he talked about?
A little bit, yeah.
Brought down.
So, you've got, we need more money in the medical examiner line, seven thousand dollars. That's just because we've got so many. We're about out of money.
Okay.
Jail, I think Ken talked to you guys a little bit about that.
Inmates are up, so meals are up.
Yeah, makes sense. The seven hundred dollars for PNZ, it's the publication cost for the solar amendment and to cover those attending the local officials training workshop. And then I talked about the four thousand. On your sheet, it says thirty-eight hundred for conservations, they're just golf. He emailed me late Friday and said it's gonna be five thousand. Now, that comes out of his capital fund, not out of the county funds. So, and I think what happened was his board decided to go with a, is it a bigger, so they can have tournaments there and things?
Yeah.
Which might be a revenue generator, which is probably a good thing. But, so the thirty-eight hundred, I am gonna increase that to five thousand.
And I can split, explain that with my report.
So I was proposing to set the hearing for May first at nine thirty a.m.
May first at?
Nine thirty.
Okay, so we have heard this, so all, all we would do is make a motion to authorize the publication of that budget amendment. So, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll so move.
I'll second it. It's been moved in second to approve the posting of the budget amendment for May first and hearing at nine thirty on May first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carries. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Jean, do you have a report for us or something?
Yeah, I just wanted to visit with you a little bit. Courtney said, she spoke with you about the tax abatement, and I just didn't know if you had any questions on that billboard one.
No.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know, just a background on that billboard. Just, I, at one of our treasurer's meeting, I kinda conducted an unofficial polling to see how many counties actually billed billboards, and only two of them responded and said that they, they did because the cost, the time and the cost involved with the processes to even build them doesn't cover, isn't covered by the revenue that's generated by the taxes collected for those. So, and, and if there's, we have no recourse if they don't pay those anyway. They don't go to tax sales. So they're just stricken from the books, and we have to bait them like we did today. So, just, that's just for future information for you. If we would ever discontinue billing billboards, that would be why. And the other thing was, I just wanted to visit with you a little bit where we're at with our driver's license. Oh, this, I didn't think this was gonna take her along. Driver's license, they're getting our credentials ready right now. We should be able to sign on, on Tuesdays and Wed, or Wednesdays and Thursdays through the rest of this month. So the rest of this month, we're gonna do Wednesdays and Thursdays, signing on ourselves, just to kinda get our feet wet and make sure there's no glitches with the transition from DOT to us. And then if everything goes well, we're hoping then May first will be the five days a week. The DOT does have a communication specialist, and they said that they would work something up if we wanted them to, for like a press release or something. We can type something up too and maybe merge the two of them. I didn't know. They asked me how big of a, how big of a hoopla do we wanna make this? Do we wanna do like a grand opening thing, or do we wanna transition into it slowly and easily? So, you know, sometimes you think maybe it's, we'd be better off kinda flying under the radar until we know for sure that everything is going to go smoothly. But the public does need to know that we're gonna be going five days a week, so.
I would say that media that announced that we're five days would be adequate.
Yeah, that's kinda what I, what I thought too. Leave it up to the media.
I don't think we need a big grandstand thing.
No, I don't either.
Well, this was because they, they, they backed on that, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'm fine with that too. That was my thoughts too, is just make the announcement and leave it up to the media if they wanna come in and take a picture that day or whatever, but not have anything big planned. But that's all right. That's what we'll do then. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Okay, we have, I gotta take my file back out here. One manure management. That's for John Offerman, and that is annual update. And that is for section eight of E-Walt. And they have made changes to crop rotation for open yield and are using manure analysis. Jay?
Just real quick, I got a call from DNR, and they are proposing to make these electronic now. And they're looking for some test counties to try it out on. Right now, we have a lot of people email these to us now, and we, and we have to print them out. So they're in here. So I said, you know, if they're gonna do a test, I said, we'd be open to that. Because right now, when you guys look at this, then I have Emily scan it, and then we file it away. Which, if we got it electronically to begin with, that would eliminate that step. So, I mean, and not that she spends a lot of time on it, but I think the least amount of paper you can use the better. You know, if it comes electronically, instead of printing this whole works out, I could print maybe the first couple pages that tell you what they're doing. And if there's questions on it, we can always look at it deeper, but normally, we don't look at.
Not that, we basically looked at one page, that's it.
That's where you sign.
So that could say.
You don't sign it.
You don't sign it anymore?
Be a little more green.
Keep it simple?
Yeah, be a little more. And then you guys could see them, you know.
So, so you have to file all that stuff that we get. You have to file all that, correct?
We scan it, so we have electronic copies, and then we file it, and I think we're keeping two years' worth.
Okay, so then that process would go away then? So we won't have to create any file space for that?
No, no. The paper files, we would, we just wouldn't have those anymore. The thing is, is if somebody calls and they want one from like three or four years ago, we just have them contact the DNR. Because the DNR has all the files, because we get a copy of this, but they also file it with the DNR when they make their payment. So, we keep them electronically, but sometimes we just, it's easier to have them call the DNR. They give them their site number, and the DNR can pull the file.
Well, and if they did want one, if you got it on your file electronic, they could, they could.
They could find it.
Copy, but they'd have to pay for printing of it.
It would probably, well, you're not, you're not, you don't have an electronic file now, correct?
We do, because we scan them. Like, I'll give this to Emily and she'll scan it sometime this week.
So now, can, you have to keep the paper copy for two years?
Well, we don't have to keep it at any length. We're not even required to keep it.
A paper copy?
We just do, because that's kinda what we said, we do.
So.
We don't need to keep any of them.
So, yeah, you can get, you can provide a paper copy back two years, but you can go back three, four years.
And I can print one off if they want it, or I can mail it to them. So we have them here, we just, once we scan them, we really don't need the paper copy anymore. But it's just kinda been the way we've done it.
I think that sounds fine.
And it's just gonna be a trial, it's gonna be a trial run, so if we're not happy or if it doesn't work out.
Just keep this simple, so you can keep it.
Well, and I just said it'll get emailed to me, and I'll probably print the first few pages off. And you guys will all get an email to you then and your information. And I suppose, you know, Monday morning, if you say, hey, I looked at this one, I'd like to see more of it.
You're not gonna email, you're gonna email just the first couple pages.
Yeah. But you should be able to tell by the first couple pages if you have a question.
I mean. I mean.
Well, the only advantage is, if you want to go take a look at it and drive by it, and if it's a new building and a new management process.
Well, it's a new one, yeah.
If it's all tied.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, right now, we only see that if we choose to look at it because of this.
Correct.
So that's not going to change. If you get the, this, the first couple pages, then if we have any questions about it, we can ask, but, I mean, we're not doing anything more than that today.
No.
Yeah.
No.
So, I mean, I, I don't think we need to, we don't see any, we don't need to see anything more than this.
I think you continue to do what you're doing, just that you're not going to have that big pile there.
Yes.
I, I agree.
Okay, fine.
And we'll just have that to list off.
Instead of be a.
Well, that will be able to list off, read this list off, or like I do, look on here, and then determine what the changes are, that's all we read off.
Okay, fair enough.
So nothing will really change for us?
No.
No.
Save a little, save a little paper.
Better for you guys.
Save a little paper.
Sounds good.
That's, and I don't know when that's starting, they've got, they have to contact me, and I haven't heard from them yet, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, committee reports. Dean, you want to start?
Sure. Um, I had a conservation board meeting on Monday night. Old business, uh, they defined the acreages, acreages that would be, uh, till, or farmed this year on the Tegas South Wildlife Area to be fifty-eight acres. Uh, the disc golf came up in a discussion. The reason they, that they increased it to the five thousand dollars was, uh, because they've got nine holes now out there. And in order for them to do tournaments, all the holes have to be the same. So they had to go, they had to buy eighteen new ones instead of nine. So they were going to add the nine to what they had, but they opted to go with the, replace the old ones as well. Different baskets, yeah, yeah. Houlihan Access, that, uh, it's coming along really great. Uh, there's, that's going to be a really nice, um, addition to the, to the trail. There was just an update on that, I think I've got, no, I think I got that at the last, last meeting. There was just an update on that, and that work is going to begin as soon as the weather cooperates. Swan Lake Monitoring Program, that was the, because of the fish kills that they've had, they've run the aerators now in the summertime. And the DNR is very interested in, um, the results of what that's going to do. So, they're actually going to monitor that for their purposes and for the lake's purposes as far as oxygen. And, uh, so they will be getting information on that at no cost to the county or to the conservation board, so that'll be a good thing. They're going to start renting kayaks out there, uh, they've never done that before, so they're going to buy some, buy some kayak at five dollars an hour, twenty, because there's been a lot of requests. They do have canoes and they do have the paddle boats, but now they've had a lot of requests for, for kayaks. So they're going to have, I think, five kayaks, and, uh, I think it's, Summerfields have given them a real good price on, on kayaks, so. They're going to be doing that this summer. Campgrounds, storm siren update. There's been some confusion on who is going to, um, initiate the alarm for the campgrounds out there. So whether it be, so now it's going to be the deputies can do it, um, because I think that last time the hostesses were confused on whether or not they should be doing it. I think they cleared that up, so. They, uh, they just, whoever in the comp center can, and anybody from the, the sheriff's department. And any of the officers or anybody from conservation. So those three have the authority to, um, start the storm sirens. They did the, um, they went over the connector with the City of Carroll Trail Connector. They went over that with the board, of course, we had covered that previously. Beach area renovation, they're going to, they're going to renovate the beach, I, you know, I, I guess I've never been down there by the beach or never been in that area. But they say they can get some pretty, pretty good utilization from, from, they're going to put a volleyball court there, uh, sandball volleyball, and just redo and make it a little bit nicer, add some sand and improve the, the beach area. Cabin rentals, that discussion continues to go on, they're going to see how mu, they're going to arrive at a price for what they can get for their, their, the new cabin. They have a lot of, it sounds like they have a lot of interest, a lot of people have wanted to secure dates, and, uh, they feel they need, it's, it's good that they come up with a rate before they, before they actually put any, get any deposits or anything like that, so. Hubs access lease was up, seventy-one acres at thirty-five dollars an acre, which has been the standard over the years. That's it for the conservation. It was a short meeting, brief meeting. Uh, the other one was that I went down to the, to the Capitol and for the, um, the Iowa Trust Fund. There are a hundred and, I think they said a hundred and twenty-five other supervisors in support of this. I've got, I think there's a, twelve counties have passed resolutions. If you want to know what those are, I can bring those up, but there's been twelve counties that have passed resolutions in support of, of the, the Iowa. I think it's a good thing, I don't think there's any dollars available right now for, for concert, for, uh, the nutrient reduction strategy. And I mean, there's all kinds of ideas, but there's no funding. And I feel that this will provide funding for that, it'll be good for the farmers, it'll be good for, uh, water quality issues, we need to be doing something. And if we don't have the funding to do it, it's not going to get done, so. With that, this week. Trying to think, I don't think I have anything this week.
Radio report.
Radio report, yeah.
Okay, Rich?
Monday, I was to have a daycare meeting, and that was full plug for, we didn't have a forum, so it's been moved to this Monday night, and I will not be able to attend that at all, so, uh, didn't do that. But then Tuesday night, I went to Wall Lake to the, um, the Western Iowa Advantage. Very informative, the speaker was very good. I, I did like some of his thoughts about staying together as a region, uh, instead of trying to go in along on a lot of different subjects, because the funding is hard enough to find to begin with. Very informative meeting. Did not have anything the rest of the week. This upcoming week, like I said, there's tonight, have that, and that, it would be all for me.
Did you have ambulance last week?
No, we did not have ambulance last weekend.
Mike said you had an ambulance last week.
We did? I, I never got any notification on it at all. That's probably why I didn't go. Was that on Monday night also?
It was on Tuesday night.
Oh, that was in Wall Lake? I, I didn't have any notification of any kind. I'll check in.
I don't know who, I don't know who does that, who does that? Who sends that out? Pat?
I think Pat.
I know, you know, I talk to Mike.
Was he supposed to be here today too?
Um, he was scheduled for next week, so I'm ready to be here.
I said that's something that I think we need to do all over.
Okay. I, I had heard that too, so.
And insurance, insurance.
My dude told me, but I did not know that.
Because he said it was only a fifty-minute meeting.
No.
That's the insurance to it, that we pushed that off to all, everybody's here.
Oh, yeah, 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 I understand that one.
That it for you then?
That's it for me.
Uh, Monday I had at, at CADC, I had a website review, uh, there was two of us that was there to review the website. They have really done a lot of work with it, they still have some work to do with it, but they just kind of more had to, you know, see if it's user-friendly and what more thoughts were, and what other additional information we should put in there. Then on Tuesday, I was out at, uh, Mallard View with Neil Bach when we set up this, kind of went around trying to make sure that it was squared up. And, uh, there's a, back in here is a pile of something high, I don't know what's underneath that, but, anyway, did that. And then I did go back later that day and look at that, because I had to go and sign papers that knew up. And I did that, and then I went up to Wall Lake, to the Western Iowa Advantage thing, and again, that was a good program. It is, when you look at what's been announced this last year and the projects that are going on, it's kind of impressive for Carroll County, what's going on and everything. And that was basically my week last week. And then, uh, this week I have CADC tomorrow afternoon at noon, and then I finally go into the pre-construction meeting on Wednesday, and then Friday, I should have a yes center board meeting. Okay, Courtney, you have anything?
No, I'm just going to wait until next week. So I'll have the bill day, and then we have, Pat will be here for the ambulance. The Walmart will be here May first. At ten o'clock.
Any comments from those in attendance? If not, we're in order for motion to adjourn.
So move. Second that.
Been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, immediate adjourn.